I'd like to call this May 17, 2023 regular meeting to order at 6:30. All members are in attendance except for Ms. Gonzalez. She's out of town. At this time, would you stand for the pledge of allegiance presented by Mr. Ornella? Oh, and Mr. Ben Warades.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where each stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Our vision statement: Working together, Fabens ISD creates a positive and lasting impact through multiple learning opportunities. Our mission statement: All students of the district will be prepared to be successful lifelong global learners. This time, we start with a public forum. Do we have any participants signed up for communication and visitors? At this time, I will read the background information. The board president will allow anyone who has signed the sheet to address the board at this time according to board policy be de local. The board encourages comments from citizens of the district or employees. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than 15 minutes combined. Remember that the board may not discuss any issues that are not posted on our agenda. The board will not hear complaints or concerns regarding individual employees or students at this time. The district has a policy of lining procedures for bringing complaints or concerns about specific individuals to the attention of the district and ensuring that they are addressed in a timely manner. Copies of our district policies on public participation and meaning the quieting complaint are available at the office of the superintendent. Finally, please be aware that rules of the government will be enforced during the public comment period. Personal attacks, name-calling, and rude or slanderous remarks will not be tolerated. Each participant is legally responsible for the content and consequences of his/her own statements. We have Sandra Flores.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez, Board members, Dr. Vehil, and community. My name is Sandra Flores. I am a math teacher at Fabens High School, and I received a designation under the Teacher Incentive Allotment Program. I wanted to thank all of you, Dr. Vehil, and the staff who worked tirelessly to bring this program to Fabens. I am extremely grateful for this program designed to attract and retain highly qualified teachers to rural communities like Fabens. It's a win not only for teachers, but most importantly, our students will have teachers who stay in Fabens and become better and better each year. Thank you.
Next, we have Imelda Madrid.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Imelda Madrid, and I work at O'Donnell Intermediate. I would like to take this opportunity to extend my sincere gratitude to Mrs. Gonzalez, Mrs. Bullard, and everyone else who worked diligently for the past couple of years to make the Teacher Incentive Allotment possible for all teachers of Fabens ISD. The Teacher Incentive Allotment was established in 2019 as a response to teachers leaving the profession. Its purpose is to reward, retain, and recruit highly effective teachers. We are honored to have 24 designated teachers here at Fabens ISD out of the 6,246 statewide. I am humbled and extremely grateful to be among these incredible individuals. I also want to thank the teacher staff, and last but not least, our dedicated principal, Mrs. Reese at O'Donnell Intermediate. This designation would not have been possible without the continuous collaboration within our departments and the campus as a whole. Thank you all for your time.
Next, we have Ms. Michelle Lorio.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez, Board members, Dr. Vehil, and community. My name is Michelle Lorio. I'm a fifth grade teacher at O'Donnell, and I'm going to use glasses to make sure I don't misread. These last couple of weeks, I've gone through a range of emotions, starting with tonight. I would like to thank the board for inviting all the recipients of the Teacher Incentive Allotment here to be recognized. I'm proud to be here with these amazing teachers from all campuses who worked so hard for this distinction. I would also like to thank the leadership of Dr. Vehil and the central office for bringing Teacher Incentive Allotment to Fabens, which will help recruit and retain highly qualified teachers to our district. It was also very heartwarming to see all 24 of these magnificent teachers be recognized at the Teacher and Employee of the Year Gala. On the other hand, I was sitting in this boardroom on May 3 as an audience member, and I teared up because I was sad for our district, which I had been a part of for 28 years and considered to be my home. As the discussion about the possible grade reconfiguration was happening, whether it was meant this way or not, it felt like my campus, O'Donnell, was attacked. The question brought up was what would it look like if the board spent $1 million on O'Donnell again? However, the proposition was not $1 million for O'Donnell. It was for money to bring the third-grade students and staff to be in the best place for alignment, support, and continued success. It felt as if that got lost, especially when Dr. Galavies at the end said there is money in other grants so that repairs on campuses could be made while still funding the move of third grade. Yet, there was no discussion of that possibility. Having worked at another campus in Fabens, I understand and appreciate equity among all campuses. But this was not about spending money to renovate one campus. It was about making decisions in the best interest of students. While I know that is what the board and admin strive for, that was not the perception given to the community and those watching the last board meeting. I understand the commitment it takes to be on the school board, and I appreciate all of your efforts. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and again, thank you for recognizing the 24 teachers who received Teacher Incentive Allotment this year.
Next, we have Rosa Rodriguez.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez, Board members, Dr. Vehil, and community. My name is Rosa Rodriguez, and I also work at O'Donnell. I just wanted to take the time to thank everyone involved in the TIA process, especially Ms. Gonzalez, Ms. Bullard, Dr. Vehil, thank you so much for your hard work and for doing that for our teachers. As a teacher, this helps me and it motivates me to contemplate ways of improving to be able to reach to the next level and become a better teacher. I want to thank Ms. Reese, our principal, because she took the time to guide us through the process, and that helped us a lot. I also want to recognize our amazing O'Donnell team, whose hard work was not only reflected in the TIA process, but also in the A campus rating. Thank you again.
Next, we have Anais Molina.
Good evening, Board President Gonzalez, Board members, Dr. Vehil, and the community. My name is Anais Molina. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at O'Donnell, and I wanted to express my sincerest gratitude to everyone involved in making TIA a reality here at Fabens. I received a teaching certification and started teaching at Fabens four years ago. So, being recognized this early in my teaching career is an honor. Being able to reflect the last four years, I see how much I have learned, but I also acknowledge I have room to grow. With TIA, I am more motivated to work harder in my future, not only for my students, but also for myself. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Our next meeting, our next agenda item, Fabens ISD Superintendent Updates. At this time, I'll hand it off to Dr. Vehil.
And I will hand it off to Sofia Masia.
Hello, good evening, Vice President. Board members, Dr. Vehil and community, my name is Sofia Masia. I'm a media specialist for Fabens ISD. And today, we're going to start with recognizing our mariachis. And for that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Deliosa.
Good afternoon, Dr. Vehil, members of the board. Rodrigo Estrada, Congressman Tony Gonzalez's District Director for El Paso and West Texas. I'm here to present a very special recognition to some outstanding students who attended Congressman Gonzalez's ribbon cutting on May 3. As many of you may know, we opened a new district office in the city of Socorro at the historic Casa Ortiz on the Mission Trail. It's a 200-year-old adobe hacienda. And to mark the occasion, we invited the best mariachi players we know here at Fabens High School. And the congressman was made sure to recognize them at the event, give them a shout-out, and take a photo with our amazing students. But he also sent me here today to present them with a very special congressional commendation all the way from Washington, D.C. in recognition for their outstanding achievement and advancing to state this past year. And we wish them the best of luck. And while I may be young, I'm old enough to remember when we didn't have a mariachi group. All we had was marching band. But had we had a mariachi group when I was in high school, I would have certainly signed up because it is a great way to express oneself, to promote our heritage and culture here in the lower valley. And so, without further ado, I'd like to present this congressional commendation to Mr. Vingbon, as well as honor and thank Ms. Carrasco for preparing the students for the ribbon cutting on May 3.
Good evening, good evening, Vice President Estrada, Board members, Dr. Vehil, and community. Our Gatos Salvajes are so great that they are practicing right now. They have other events coming up in the next two weeks, and they said, can we practice? I said, yes, absolutely. I'll definitely accept this on your behalf. They're very proud of this. They wanted to say that it was a pleasure performing for Senator, and they just want to showcase what they can do, and they can do so much better. So, let me have a Gatos Salvajes. I accept, please. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And at this time, we would like to recognize our Fabens Middle School Wrestling Team. Where is Coach Deanda? There she is. She'll presenting some awards.
Good evening, Vice President, Mr. Estrada, Dr. Vehil, members of the board, and community. My name is Ms. Deanda, and I am the athletic director here in Fabens ISD. And this evening, I come before you to recognize our middle school wrestling athletes and their coaches for their dominant success this year. They finished their season at Horizon High School and clearly at the top of all competition that was there, and we are so proud of their accomplishments. I received so many personal texts and phone calls about the number of kids that we had participating and the way that they carried themselves as they represented Fabens ISD. And for these reasons, at this time, I will recognize all members of this middle school wrestling team. If I could please have my wrestling coaches, if you're here with me, come up here. So, when we call your name, if you'll come up and get your certificate from your coaches, and then you'll shake all of the board members' hands, and you're going to stay up there in front because they're going to take a picture of you, okay? All right. Luis Peña. Nathan Hernandez. Cassandra Sanchez. Giselle Ruiz. Madison Jurado. Jocelyn Gallegos. Faith Diaz. Julio Martinez. Damian Cordero. Adrian Castro. Alina Armendares. Josué Carillo. Eduardo Aguirre. Arle Ramírez. Bianay Martinez. Congratulations, Coach Bellas, Coach Erdanes, athletes, parents, and the proud Fabens community. We look forward to the accomplishments, right, that these young ladies and gentlemen will have as they move on, right, some of them to the high school, and as they are competing to represent Fabens High School and the Wildcats as part of this wrestling team. So, congratulations, and thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. Come on, guys. Wait here. I just want to take a picture at this time. Okay, one last one, guys, everybody. Come here.
That I need you to...
Yes. No, I was invited. I was going to come over here.
Congratulations and thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to the TIA awards. We've heard from some of our teachers earlier, and I'm going to go ahead and read a statement by one of the teachers that could be here today. This is from Mr. Justin Stone at Fabens High School. "Good evening to my esteemed colleagues on the Fabens High School Board. My name is Justin Stone, and I teach English classes at Fabens High School, including dual-credit college English, AP Literature and Composition, and English IV. I regret I am unable to join the board in person this evening due to family responsibility. I wish to thank the board for everything you do for our educational community. In particular, I wish to thank you for your support of my professional development. I thank my administrative team and superintendent for their care and support. The Teacher Incentive Allotment is a good and necessary program that begins to address the much larger problem of teacher compensation and retention. As a society, it is imperative that we sustain and support our teachers, especially those who are effective in their subject areas and who have committed themselves to the demands of this difficult profession. I am deeply grateful to be recognized as a TIA recipient this week." I am deeply grateful to be recognized as a TIA recipient this year. The award justifies my commitment to teaching as well as my commitments to the Fabian's community. Receiving the TIA is an integral part of my decision to remain with the district. I drive a great distance to work at Fabian's High School every day because I do enjoy being part of the Fabian's ISD team. But quite frankly, the Teacher Incentive Allotment makes my decision more professionally and economically sustainable. I hope to see Fabian's ISD continue to grow the TIA program so that we can attract and retain educators committed to the excellence and joy in their learning community. Thank you so much." Now, as far as the TIA Awards, thank you for inviting our Teacher Incentive Allotment Designated Teachers to be recognized. Once again, you'll hear more about Teacher Incentive Allotment later in this meeting. Fabian's ISD has an approved expansion system for the current school year and expects additional designations to be awarded in the coming school year based on student growth this year. Today, we recognize our first cohort of TIA designated teachers for Fabian's ISD. Our first group are the TIA Designated Recognized Teachers who have earned a TIA Designated Recognized Seal, which will be placed under State Board of Education Teaching Certificate and is valid for five years. So I'm over here, but I will name everybody. So we start with Citlali Ávalos, who I don't believe is with us this evening. Ms. Francis Chavira. I saw you. Sorry, yes, everybody come up and shake hands with the board, please. And I wasn't specific on that one. And Ms. Sandra Cortinas. Oh, okay. She's also not able to join us today. Ms. Nicole Dennis, also not able to join us. I see Ms. Cristina Dominguez, I know she's there. Sandra Dominguez. Another Sandra, Sandra Flores. Lisbeth Franco, I don't believe I heard the audience today. Ms. Lilia García. Mr. Abraham Martinez. Anaís Molina. Rosalía Orozco. Gloria Otero. Melissa Palacios. Mr. Justin Stone is not able to join us today. I was just writing a statement. And Ms. Veronica Villanueva. Did I miss somebody?
No, you're fine. No, you're fine.
No, that sounds like I missed somebody. Come on, speak up.
There's more names.
No, there are more names. I'm not... And this time, I won't murder Alyssa, even though she's not here. And then, so thank you. Well, go ahead, and if somebody can... Oh, I have your phone. Okay. And... So the next group of our TIA Designated and Exemplary Teachers are...
No, wait. I belong with her. I don't belong with the others.
Patricia Ramírez, everybody. No, Ms. Laura remains standing, you're next. The next group of our TIA Designated Exemplary Teachers start with Ms. Michelle Lorio. Ms. Emelda Madrid. Ivan Muñoz. Alyssa Piñada. Rosa Rodriguez. And Jenny Romero. Finally, Fabian's is very proud to have one TIA Designated Master Teacher so far. She is...
Don Ro.
Ms. Nancy Chavira. Do you have a check hiding back there? I see it. So would all TIA teachers, board members, and administration, please, post with this check indicating the amount that TEA will pay Fabian's ISD to reward designated teachers and support future designations. The amount is $273,477 guaranteed for each of the next five years. So... Congratulations to everybody. Thank you so much for all your hard work.
Next item on the agenda, Fabian's ISD, I'm sorry, Consent Agenda. Is any of our superintendent?
Board members, the Consent Agenda items this month consist of the minutes of the workshop training board meeting, April 15, 2023; minutes of the regular board meeting, April 19, 2023; minutes of the special board meeting, May 3, 2023; Fabian's ISD monthly financial reports and federal expenditures; approval of the Cotton Valley Early College at Fabian's High School, MOU. The administration recommends approval of Consent Agenda items as presented.
Sure.
Okay.
Motion and second?
A second by?
Mr. Flores?
Aye.
Estrada?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
And I, Vice President.
I see your point here.
Next item on the agenda, Teacher Incentive Allotment. Is it invited, Gonzalez?
Good evening, Vice President Estrada, Dr. Vee, members of the board and community and staff. This evening, we are happy to return with another Teacher Incentive Allotment. We want to thank our Board President Gonzalez for inviting the teachers back tonight and for requesting this update because it's very timely. So what I'm going to present to you is just a little overview of how we got to where we are today because it took a long time. All right, and so now I don't have to ask to move the slide. We get to do it ourselves, so that should be helpful. Okay, so a little bit of background, you heard a little bit already. And also in the evening that they were honored at the Teacher of the Year banquet. But Teacher Incentive Allotment, or TIA as it's called, elevates the educational profession by recognizing and rewarding effective teaching and incentivizing outstanding teachers to remain in the classroom and improve student outcomes. Way back in 2019, when we heard about Teacher Incentive Allotment from the Commissioner directly, he talked about some research that was done where parents of high schoolers, and when asked, would you like your children to go into education and become a teacher? A high percentage said, no, it doesn't pay enough. That they weren't encouraging their kids to become teachers. You know, that research showed that it wasn't as an appealing profession as we'd certainly like it to be, because it is a rewarding profession. But that stigma that it doesn't pay as well as it should can keep kids from going for those degrees. And as you know, we've done a lot of Grow Your Own efforts to encourage our students to choose this as a possible pathway for their future. And Teacher Incentive Allotment was designed to help change that. The other thing he talked about was that in order to make more money in education, you have to get out of the classroom and go into administration. But there's many teachers who their passion is in the classroom, and they want to stay in the classroom and serving the students. And so this is another pathway towards raising your salary and your retirement that can happen by staying in the classroom and improving student outcomes. So for those reasons, Teacher Incentive Allotment was born. And so districts use Teacher Incentive Allotment funds to retain teachers, recruit promising new teachers, and incentivize teachers to work in high-need schools and difficult-to-staff positions. And so you'll see later in the presentation, the allotments are not the same from school to school. They're higher in high-need areas than they are in areas that are easier to find teachers. So it's here to help us, but it's not an easy process. So it has several steps involved. And the first step is the district has to apply and sign a data sharing agreement. So we have to share our data, our teacher evaluation data, as well as our student growth data, because that has to be analyzed. And even districts who don't participate in TIA, TEA has reached out to them to share data as well so that they have more data to compare, along with the STAR and EOC data that they already have. So the application process starts with stakeholder input. And so we had cross-sections of teachers involved in this process from the very beginning to help us design our initial application, which is actually three years ago. And we also had surveys that went out to all teachers to give us feedback on the different aspects of our application. And so then we crossed our fingers and hoped that our application was approved, and it was. And so step two, then, we, TEA approves of the local designation system, but that doesn't mean you get any money yet. The next step is we have to have a whole year of data validation. So once we're approved, the teachers' teaching assignments that were in the first application, because it's not every teacher assignment for the first round, we have data capture. And so that last school year, 21-22 school year, is our first data capture year. And so we're capturing the data, we're sending it in to TEA, and they contract out with Texas Tech University to evaluate our data. All of our data is due by October of the following school year, which was October of 2022. And then we don't find out until February that if we passed or not. But in October, one of the things that we did was give scorecards to our teachers that were in eligible teaching assignments. So they knew, you know, how did they come out according to our approved plan? Were they up for a designation or not? And that was a little bit nerve-wracking because, you know, a teacher gets a scorecard that says, hey, you're probably going to get a, your data shows that you should be a recognized teacher, but we haven't passed yet. And so the last thing we want to do is go back to that group of teachers and tell them, you know what, we didn't pass, our data didn't pass, and nobody gets anything. And so some districts, because we worked with other districts in many of the workshops where we learned about TIA, some districts we met that didn't pass, that tried ahead of us. And I even asked, you know, how did that go when you have to go back and tell the teachers that you didn't pass? And that's heartbreaking. I can't imagine going through that, right? But we kept our fingers crossed and hoped that, you know, we followed our application to the T. We followed the guidelines to the T and hoped that it passes. So when it did, we were very relieved that it passed because that's not only a good sign for the teachers that were up for designations this year, which you met tonight and at the previous celebration, but it's also a good sign for people who didn't get a designation yet because it means they're in good shape going forward, and they have a clear roadmap to get a designation. So we're proud of that. And then while we're doing that, and while we're waiting to find out if we pass, we're already making our expansion application. The expansion application was heavily reliant on teachers to be involved. And Dr. Hope led much of that effort of having focus groups with different teachers, teaching assignment, to be able to add additional areas that are harder to measure of student growth, such as band, such as guitar, such as the non-STAR-tested core areas. And we were able to work with those teachers, even physical education. And you'll see it in a later slide, I'm getting ahead, able to add those to the expansion. So that application was approved, but we're in the data capture year right now. So then step four, TEA makes final approval of district designations, and that happened, like I mentioned, in February. That's how we were able to send out the good news. But we still had to wait a little bit longer to find out, well, how much does that going to mean? Every year, they calculate what the designation is going to be based on our rural status and our economically disadvantaged status, which does fluctuate from year to year. All right, all that on one slide. Only got ahead of myself. So what are the designations a teacher can look forward to? It is recognized, exemplary, and master. The designations, as we mentioned, are added to the teacher's ESPEC certificate, and they're valid for five years. These designations are portable, so we want to retain. You heard that we want to retain teachers, but a teacher can go to another district and still get their award, but it's at the rate of that district pays. And we are one of the highest-paid districts because we are rural and high economically disadvantaged status. So if you go into a wealthier area, you're not going to get as high of a reward, but it does go with you within the state of Texas. If you notice there, and there's another slide that I'll tell you about this, where it says National Board Certification. That's another pathway to get the recognized status is by becoming National Board Certified, which teachers can do, and we can support them in that. And I'll tell you a little bit more about that when we get to that slide. So three levels to work for. Also, the first one we mentioned, the highest level is Master Teacher. And this, it designates a teacher, indicates that the teacher has achieved a level of appraisal and growth performance that places them in a level commensurate with the top 5% of teachers statewide. And so that's important because when we talk about data capture, they're comparing our teachers to the entire state, their STAR scores to the entire state, their student growth scores to the entire state to see, is it valid? If our approved plan says they came out master, do their scores compare? Do they measure up? Otherwise, we wouldn't pass data capture. And then we have exemplary. Oh, there you go. They're fixing it from... Okay. Exemplary is the top 20% of teachers statewide and recognizes the top 33% of teachers statewide. And then National Board Certification. So we mentioned that it's based on teacher observation, which is our teacher evaluation system, which is TTEST, and it's based on our student growth measures. And we have some additional measures that we'll explain. But let's say a teacher doesn't, is it in one of the teaching assignments that we have in our application? They can go this route, but any teacher can go the National Board Certification route. National Board Certification is available in 25 certificate areas across 16 disciplines from pre-K to 12th grade. So a teacher who's interested in going this route can do so. And the district can use the district's 10% of TIA funds to help pay upfront costs, help them with the reimbursement process, help them with some training and support for this process. And our very own Ms. Peña, Denise Peña, our secondary ER coordinator, is reaching out to teachers, and she's going to be their point of contact and become an expert right alongside with them to help them through the National Board Certification process. This is a process that any teacher can do on their own, but we want to help them and create a cohort so that they can work towards this together. This is the pathway that they choose. So what are the components? Teacher observation, which is our TTEST system. Student performance, which I'll show you which ones those are. And optional additional factors. So schools can choose other factors that they want to weigh into Teacher Incentive Allotment, such as teacher attendance, teacher mentorship, things of that nature. So Fabian's ISD, with the help of our stakeholder inputs, selected Domain 4 of the TTEST, which is the professional responsibilities. So teacher observation, that's not an option. We have to use it, and it's only Domains 2 and 3. Domains 2 and 3 are the instruction and the classroom environment. Then it's student growth, and then it's the optional factors, which is our Domain 4, which can give them some extra points. Oh, let me go back really quick. The optional is 10% only. So you have 50, 40, and 10% as the weights. So Cohort D, that's a group of teachers that you just met. And it doesn't stop there with that group of teachers. Cohort D continues. We expanded our application, but all of these teaching assignments are still eligible in this current school year and will continue to be eligible for as long as the legislature funds TIA. This money doesn't come out. It comes out temporarily out of our budget, but it's reimbursed by the state. So this is extra money to the district from the state. So I want to make that clear. So our pre-K teachers already have, and the group that's in Cohort D already had some student growth measures in place, which made this group the ideal group to start with. Pre-K teachers use the Circle Progress Monitoring System. Kindred through second-grade teachers have Renaissance STAR for reading and math, and it's in English and Spanish equally. Third-grade teachers have Renaissance STAR. You see, we have that all the way up to 8th grade. They also have, take STAR for the first time, but they have a pre and post. After 3rd grade, we have the STAR Progress Measure, and that is what was used because that's determined by the state in addition to Renaissance STAR. And the reason we doubled up there is because this is coming right off of COVID, when not everybody took the STAR test. So there would be some students that didn't have a growth measure if we didn't double up. Then you have our STAR EOC. Then you have our STAR EOC at the high school level and our advanced placement. Advanced placement already have the post test, and college board provides a pre-test for us as well. So this is the group that we started with. And so you might be wondering, you know, well, how do teachers feel that are not in these areas? They weren't eligible in the first group. And so if they're recognized in the second group in cohort E, they get their full five years of incentive, they don't lose anything, they get their full five years, they're just starting a later cohort. And the idea of that is to make sure that we move forward carefully, so that we get designations, and we add teaching assignments carefully, so that we continue to pass data capture. There is always that risk that we don't pass the following year. You have to pass every single year. And we do have a district nearby that passed in cohort C before us, they were ahead of us, when there was a lot less support for it, now there's more, and then they didn't pass cohort D. And so they had to deal with that as well. So we've been able to learn from other districts. And I do have to say, though we appreciate all the kind words, we do have technical assistance that helped us through this entire process, and I have to give credit to the El Paso Community Foundation, who funded activated partners and our technical assistance person through the whole entire process, her name is Betsy Cook, in case she's watching. She analyzed all of our data. We even, I wouldn't say contracted out, because we didn't have to pay, El Paso Community Foundation paid, we contracted out the circle data, because that's a little bit more difficult to analyze. And so we did have some assistance throughout the process, and we continue to use that technical assistance to ensure that our programs are solid. And so she meets with us weekly to check in on our work and to see what's been done. So cohort D data capture year was 21-22. We have another data capture year this year for the same teacher groups, and this kind of just goes through the cycle that I described. I think I got a little bit ahead of myself, but you can see the process. So funds are not distributed until the end of the following school year for the data capture last year. So what was earned last year is not paid out until July 15. And then that cycle keeps going. So it took a long time to get here, but now we have a yearly cycle that should be going strong. And then while that was going on, overlapping was cohort E planning, which is bringing in additional teaching assignments and working on those growth measures to make sure that they're valid. And so in the cohort E expansion, you see grade six to 12 band and guitar. You see science, sixth and seventh, so it's all the non-tested core subjects. And you see physical education, pre-K through 12. And you can see what growth measures they're using there. And the band and guitar, that also has to be contracted, which we do pay for that one, and that's paid out of our 10% of TIA funds, because we do not have a finance director, we're too small for that, right? But we can contract out that work to have those portfolios evaluated. So cohort E implementation will follow the same cycle. And so this is our data capture year, everything will be due in October, and then we wait all the way till February to see if they pass, and then those payouts come the following July. And so hopefully you'll see additional faces here, showing appreciation to you all for your support of this program. And so we always say if approved. So I know this is way too small, nobody can read this one, so we did zoom in a little bit. And so I know, it's zoomed in on the next slide, there we go. If it's possible, make it a little bit bigger, thank you so much. All right, I appreciate that. So this just kind of gives you an example of the cycle. So it shows you when we start doing our application, and then it shows you when we're notified of system approval, and then when we have our data capture year, and then we're already in the 22-23 school year, and like I told you, we found out in February. But while we're finding out, we already have another data capture year going on, and this is just cohort D. We have cohort E going on at the same time, and then we have our final expansion of cohort F waiting for approval. And that should be it, but you have the opportunity every year to modify and refine your application if, through the process, you find things that work better for teachers. And so then you see the next three years, so what will happen? There's data capture years every year. So for the teachers that you met tonight, for a recognized teacher, for example, let's say they're in this data capture year, they qualify for exemplary or mastered, then they can get re-designated for a higher designation if we pass data capture, and then their five years starts over again. Or let's say something happens and they don't, they don't lose the designation they already have. So that's guaranteed minimum for five years, they can't lose that, okay? Unless the legislature stops funding it, they can't lose their designation, they can't go backwards. However, to keep getting the money each year, they have to stay in a teaching assignment. So if they became an assistant principal or something like that, they would not continue to get the designation. If they left teaching for two years, tried another career and came back, they could still have their designation, but they lost those two years they were gone, because the clock keeps running. So that's information for everybody, just so you know. So the clock keeps running, like we said. So you're wondering, like, okay, they're getting paid this July for work they did last year. The good thing about that is they'll have another data capture year at the end of their five years, so that there's no break if they continue to perform well. If their data continues to look good, they could renew and get another five years. That is totally possible. It's possible they could go higher, it's possible they could go lower after that five years. And this is to thank our teachers. This is part of a lot of initiatives that we have going on to recruit and retain and keep our wonderful teachers here in Fabens and to attract more teachers to want to come to Fabens as well, because that has been a challenge since COVID. We've had great teacher consistency, we've had a lot of teachers that have stayed with us for a lot of years, even before this. But it's become harder after COVID to recruit teachers, and this is definitely helpful. So when Ms. Benencourt is at the job fair, she's promoting teacher incentive allotment, she's promoting our mentor program for new teachers. She's letting people know all of the initiatives that we have here to support our teachers, whether it's to help them their first year, whether it's giving them an opportunity to become a mentor after they've had a couple of years under the belt, or whether it's giving them an opportunity to go for an incentive allotment, which does count to their retirement, and that's really important. This is making lives better in the long run as well. And so it's something that's going to be going under continuous improvement, but we're excited that we've gotten to where we are, and we just hope that we can continue this process for more teachers to come. So I thank you for your time, and thank you for inviting us back to share about teacher incentive allotment.
You described, Ms. Gonzales, if a teacher leaves and goes to another district, their award is based on the socioeconomic status of that district.
Correct.
How about teachers that want to come teach that have been designated in another district?
Right, so if they got designated in another district and they come to Fabens, they get paid at the Fabens rate, and the state reimburses us for that. And so we want that, you know, we want teachers that are applying, that come with a designation, that already tells you they have a proven track record of student growth. Another positive thing that I failed to mention is, we know about HB4545, which means if a student does not pass their STAR test, they need to do a certain amount of hours of intervention. If they're placed in a class with a teacher with a designation, those hours are no longer required. That doesn't mean we can't still offer it, because we probably will, so I'm telling you that upfront. But it's meaning that you're placing those kids where they need to be. So if I have one teacher in fourth grade, for example, or two, that are designated, those students who didn't pass STAR are going to go to those teachers, because they're going to serve the kids that need them the most. They're going to be in a big district, they can designate teachers only at certain feeder patterns where they're hard to fill, they have that option, and they're going to place those designated teachers in the areas where they're needed most. And that's the idea of TIA also. It's to help us, but it's also primarily to help the students to have the teacher that they need that has a proven track record of student growth. And I failed to mention the amounts, so the amounts this year came out, and this is the average, it varies by campus. So you're going to have a recognized teacher at one campus making slightly different than another, because every campus has their economically disadvantaged percentage, but there's slight differences. So the average for recognized is 8,405. 90% of that goes to the teacher, of course, taxes and TRS, all of that comes out, right, which I let them know, just so they're aware, because it's a lot. And then exemplary is 16,800, and master teachers, an average of 30,017. So it's pretty impactful.
And the second is just a comment to the board members. As we looked at the growth measures, and obviously you can tell a lot of thought went into every single part of the teacher incentive allotment. We use Renaissance STAR, and so that should sound familiar to you. This is the data that we bring to you monthly, or whenever we are talking about student outcomes and showing you the growth that has happened. We have pre-test and post-test, and in between, we're letting you know how the students are doing by grade level, by subgroup, et cetera, et cetera. So the last thing is, the teachers, congratulations again. I've already asked to go on the shopping spree with some of them. I love it.
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
Next item on the agenda, approval of BSN contract, presented by Ms. Deanda.
Good evening again. Good evening, Vice President, Mr. Estrada, Dr. Vigil, members of the board, and Fabens community. My name is Ms. Deanda, and I'm the athletic director here in Fabens ISD. And this evening, I come before you to ask for the approval of the BSN contract. BSN is pleased to offer Fabens ISD the sports rewards program for our purchases of athletic apparel and equipment for use by our school and our in-studensive programs. All total incentives for the program are listed in your packets in more detail. And the contract was carefully reviewed by Dr. Vigil, Mr. Torres, and our legal counsel to ensure that the wording in the contract or the terms in the contract benefit Fabens ISD. At this time, do you have any questions for me? Administration requests approval of the BSN contract as presented.
At this time, do we have a motion?
Motion, second.
Vice Chair, I.
I'm sorry, who motioned first? Escobar and second by Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Motion passive.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, 2023 Fabens High School graduation update, presented by Mr. Edgar Tango.
Good evening, once again, Vice President Estrada, board member Dr. Vigil, and the community. I'm here to present our plans for our senior class of 2023 graduation. Just want to give you some data first. Is, we, right now, we're scheduled to have, it says up there in your packet, 141 kids, but actually it's 151 seniors that we are scheduled to graduate. And you'll see some demographic data there, as far as, for example, gifted and talented, 5% of our seniors are that. At risk, 73%, economically disadvantaged is 88%. Emerging bilinguals is 36%, and students coded special education is 10%. So that's, again, the total of the number of seniors that we have scheduled to graduate. And what I'm going to show you right now is some SAT data. Our students took some SAT, wanted to prepare for post-graduation plans. So this data that you see up here is just the average of, well, the average scores for all students, male students, female students, on that took, excuse me, the SAT on the 27th of October. I'll just go over the total scores for overall, for Fabens High School. A SAT score for both male and female is 852. Broken down there by each gender, male is 855 total score, and female is 847 total score. So I just wanted to give you some perspective. The average score in Texas is a 1013. The average score for SAT for El Paso is 929. So as you can see there, we fall a bit short on the SAT scores for Fabens High School, but we've already made some plans. We, for the upcoming school year, we are preparing, or getting ready some sections of SAT prep, and right now, later, I'll talk about TSI prep, in order to increase this score. Looking at different criteria of different colleges, based on SATs, we need to, we need to increase that average. So we have plans already for it. I think with the teachers that we have in place for that, we are going to see that increase. All right, so the next one is college readiness. As you, as you know, or just as a reminder, we had some common exceptions due to the pandemic. Any student that has an algebra, for algebra II, a B or above, they can take dual credit classes in math. Or any student that has, that had a B or above for English I or English II, they can take the entry level, English 13 and 1, college English class. So we also have some, excuse me, I wanted to add that that exemption will continue for one more year. So students that get that B or above for either that algebra II, English I, or English II can start taking some college-level courses. We also have offer at Fabens High School college prep courses. So there you see the number of students that are taking an English, excuse me, an English prep course, that's 68, and a math, that's 70 students. So that will prepare them for after they graduate, when they enter college, community college, or university. Also for the TSI data, you see there, we have some participation numbers for reading and writing. We had a participation rate of 98%, so 98% of our seniors took that. And then it was also 98% of our students took the math TSI. This is, TSI is a Texas Success Initiative exam that if you do well, if you pass it, then it means you're college-ready and ready to take on college courses. So, excuse me, for reading and writing, we have a 30% passing rate. For math is a 13% passing rate. It is a difficult exam, it is challenging, but we also have plans to create some classes for TSI prep. During our end of year TTEST summative, we got to know our teachers a little bit better, and those coming in have some experience in TSI prep. So we're going to put them in those classes, we can help our students increase that student passing percentage to get ready for college classes. All right, continuing on college readiness, you see our cohort of 151 seniors. They have a 90% GPA or above, we have 42 students that meet that. We've currently had some TSTEM students that will graduate, that's seven. And then for PTEx, fairly new program, currently we have 10 11th graders that will be next year seniors. We have 11 10th graders, 15 and 9th graders. And then early college students, we enrolled, we have 57 enrolled, and as of the fall and spring semester of this year, we graduated 27 students, so they got their associate's degree. So we're very proud of that, of course, we hope to improve that number. But I think out of the 57, 27 graduated, that's a good accomplishment. Scholarship data, the latest that we have is on the 19th of April. We have a total, an amount of 721,504 dollars for scholarship, and they're still coming. So we can update you with that number as they come, but every day, students are getting some scholarships. But that's the current amount, the most updated amount that we have. All right, so we're not blind to the fact, right, that we do have some seniors that do need extra support. So currently, out of the 151 seniors, we have nine seniors that are at risk of not graduating. So far, if this stays that way, it's a 94% graduation rate. We want to increase that, of course, we want everyone of our single senior, everyone of our seniors to graduate. To do that, we have administration, particularly me, I've been meeting with counselors on the progress of each of those students. We've been, we started that about maybe a month and a half ago, because, you know, time runs out. And then after starting May 8, we started meeting with the parent counselor and principal to give them or make them realize a sense of urgency when it comes to the graduation, June 2 is coming. And we want to help them with anything that they need to meet the criteria to graduate. Right now, our students take Ingenuity, which is a program that has online credit recovery. Students that may not have passed a class in previous years, previous semesters, they take it online. And so they're starting to make progress, well, they've had any progress, but now the time is coming. They're taking it more seriously after we had these meetings. We also have students that lost, that lost credit due to attendance. We have increased our loss of credit hours, before it was from 4:30 to 6:30. Now it's 4:30 to 8:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. And then from Saturday, we had them from 8:30 to 2:30, they are now from 8:30 to 2:30. And yes, they're packed, because I tell the students every day, time is running out, we want you to graduate, because I always tell them that everything's ready, right, everything's ready, the stage is rented, the chairs are rented. Everything's ready, the stage is rented, uh, the chairs are, are rented. Now we have a sound system, we have, uh, the decorations, the chair covers, everything. And we want to see every single one of our students walk across that stage. So that gives them a, a bit of a sense of urgency and, and a little, um, encouragement, or a lot of encouragement, I should say, to, to, uh, walk across that stage, June second. Alright, so I said a little bit, uh, just, I just said it about our graduation ceremony is June second at seven PM. Yeah, we have the stage, sound system, uh, chair and chair covers, uh, and just as, as years pass, we have two guests for graduate on the football field. Uh, stands will be open sitting, seniors will, will line up in the tech wing, um, for canine searches, just to be on the safe side, uh, before we start the ceremony. And then we just had a graduation meeting today at two PM to finalize everything, and everything is set. Uh, everything, everyone's working well together to make this the best graduation, uh, we've had. That's just some logistics and how it's going to be, it's just going to be just like last year, I think it worked well. Uh, the only thing that, that we didn't do last year that we want to do this year is have the, the board walk, um, walk where the students are coming from, um, the board first, the teachers, and then we'll start, uh, the music for students to, uh, walk into the, into the football field. So it's an exciting time. Uh, the energy is, is alive as you walk into our campus. Uh, kids are excited, and I know everybody wants to see them walk across that stage. So I have any question? Oh, I have one more thing, excuse me, this is a, uh, senior activities, uh, happening in your packet of everything that's happening when it comes to our, our seniors. Uh, it's busy, busy month of May and, and a few days of June. This is everything from our prom to our EPCC graduation, to our pep rallies, to our senior sunset. Uh, with, um, our, I want to thank our, uh, senior sponsor, Ms. Aldo. She's, uh, worked very, very hard on, uh, meeting the needs of the kids, uh, so they can have the best, uh, last high school experience possible, so we appreciate her absolutely. Uh, if you wanna, if you want to attend any of these, uh, we invite you to, to attend so you can experience this exciting time with us. Questions?
Yes, to the chair. If you go back to this, this slide, uh, SAT performance.
Yes, sir.
Would have been nice if you would have provided last year's, uh, results.
Comparison.
Just to see if there's any growth or not. Do you know if there's any growth from last year to this year?
I don't have that data for you, but I can provide a preview of the rounds.
Absolutely. And I know you said that you, um, were gonna start some, um, class to drop off. When did you plan on doing that?
Next for the upcoming twenty-three, twenty-four.
Right away?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then if you go to slide seniors at risk.
Yes, sir.
Says parent counselor, principal meeting started May eighth. Now ask you why so late? It's not even on March.
Right, we started at that, we started that day because, I mean, we were meeting with a student. Uh, it was, it was the, um, counselor, the, the principal, myself, the student. We contacted the parent, given, telling them why, uh, or where they were at in regards to them, uh, credit-wise to graduate. But it's not until May eighth, when we told the parent, "Come in, come in, we really need to talk to you."
Oh, I saw that.
I think that time is a, May eighth, I think it was still a, um, in my opinion, inadequate time to start. You know, graduation is May, is June second, uh, a month in advance, I think it would be appropriate time. They're making progress, absolutely, they're increasing the progress in Ingenuity. They're making the loss of credit hours, I think that number's gonna drop.
Correct, I do understand that, but you just said that the loss of credit, those classes are packed. Now, maybe I'm wrong, but, I think if you would have started this earlier, these classes wouldn't be as packed.
Well, we've had it all year, loss of credit has been all year.
Including the parents?
Not including the parents, uh, uh, the loss of credit.
But don't you think the parents is a major impact in this?
Absolutely, they're, they're great partners for us, and we need to work together to make their child successful. I understand what you're saying, yes, maybe, uh, we could start next year earlier than that. So that sense, sense of urgency can be, uh, way before graduation. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Edgar.
Next item on the agenda, selection of date for board preliminary procedure training with district legal counsel. And this would be a board decision for the dates. Any suggestion?
To the chair, do you think we can leave that talk to the end? Or, I mean, it just continues to the audience queue?
Well, all we would have to do is decide on a date. Is that true, one day?
So take one of these four days?
Well, we could choose.
There's spans, there's spans of days, but it's only one.
One day. Any suggestions, just with those? You're all, it uses a week, it's kind of good.
Right.
With, without for one day, do you want that, how many hours?
I think it's one to two hours.
One to two hours?
I think it can be done in one hour.
May thirtieth, the first one, first three days. You're all, you're all good, it's Thursday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Or that, I'm just saying that, that, that week. Mr. Escobar?
I'm good with any.
Sir, what?
June thirtieth, Saturday.
Yeah, but our graduation on June second, and then, we have, um, graduation, please.
Your next Saturday is June tenth, Ms. Escobar. Pardon? Your next Saturday is June tenth, which also is listed.
Because Ben, you know, he's someone that usually arrives on Sundays.
To, to accommodate his work schedule.
That Saturday's not. These upcoming weekends are not. Mr. Escobar?
That's very busy. It's not June, I think it's June thirtieth now, because, yeah, it's not much. It's Saturday to the end.
I would prefer during the week. I don't know.
How about before, um, regular board meeting in June? When is the June meeting?
Twenty-first.
June twenty-first?
Yes, sir.
So that date you prefer the meeting? You guys agree?
June twenty-first? I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, go ahead. Isn't that June twenty-first?
And the time?
Before the, are we doing?
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
So it's the number twenty-first?
Yes, twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first to twenty-first. So it's the day of the board meeting?
Yes.
And what if person raises that meeting more than an hour?
I can run it by Mr. Soffe, you guys can. One hour is sufficient. If it's not, I'll get back to you. Motion.
I motion.
Will you have a simple? Mr. Flory? Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
Aye, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, school supply packs. Administration recommends the approval of the purchase of the school supply packs not to exceed sixty-seven thousand. Presented by Ms. Michelle.
Good evening again, um, Vice President, um, Estrada, Dr. Vigil, members of the board and the community. Um, so, uh, one thing that, uh, the district was able to do, uh, with part of our ESR funds after COVID was to help, uh, relieve some of the burden of our families in buying school supplies for the new school year. So this, um, purchase would represent the third year of providing the school supply packs for our students. Uh, and this is, uh, what we're proposing, we compared, uh, three companies once again. And Mr. Torres provided a, a sample of what we got last year. It's not totally complete, but it gives you a sample of the quality, uh, from EPI, uh, which is the company we're recommending based on price and quality and delivery time. We did have some concerns with quality and delivery time with the company we used the first year. So we had a much more success last school year with this company, so we'd like to continue with them again. But we do always search out the best price once again. We don't just automatically use the same company. And so once again, they came in with the lowest price, um, and the most reliable delivery. And we have some other districts in the area, some large districts that use them as well with good reliability. Uh, so if you would like to provide this service to our families once again, I, I think it would be appreciated, and we do have the ESR funds. I will make a slight correction, I did note ESR three, but there's a possibility we can use ESR two funds for this as well. Um, and so we'll do, go with the best option there, but it's still ESR, um, funding. Um, and so the administration recommends the approval of the purchase of the school supply packs not to exceed sixty-seven thousand dollars. And I just rounded it there in case any of the principals want to tweak, uh, their list a little bit. They have the opportunity to do so, uh, very quickly. Uh, but however, they have to keep within their budgets, which are outlined in the, in the, um, proposal. And this is to go this month so that we can get them before the first day of school. Questions?
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Um, I know it says earbuds. Is it the little tiny little earbuds, or it's like the hip phone?
So it is the tiny little earbuds that don't last. However, those are for the students to take and use. We do have quality earphones that we've purchased for the classrooms, and we're expanding that.
For everyday use?
For everyday use, and we don't have a hundred percent coverage yet, we've been purchasing more every year. But that is our goal with remaining ESR funds, not part of this fund, is to complete class sets of the durable earphones.
Right, because I did experience the little tiny earbuds get lost, and they're a mess, or they don't work. And this year we got the
The big ones.
The big ones, and they're dirty, and they're too glass, practically all year.
Absolutely, I agree.
So I don't know, there would be a big difference in price?
Absolutely, earbuds themselves are very inexpensive, um, but
And what about the?
The ear, the, the, the quality ones are more, but we have a different funding for that, that we can use to keep adding to the classroom supplies of those. And so we did make sure, at least this year, that our bilingual classes had enough because they're testing, um, Tellpass online and with listening and speaking. We also have testing earphones that we only use for testing that are noise-canceling, those are more expensive. So we just roll those out for testing. But we do want the classrooms to have high-quality earphones. Some of our campuses did purchase their own. And even in addition to these supply packs, the students are gonna run out. And so the campuses do have also a budget for classroom supplies where they replenish the teachers as well, uh, for, in the classroom. But, but we do want to purchase the high-quality earphones or just not part of the pack that we give to the student. This is something we're just giving to them, it's theirs, to use for home or school. Good, great question. Any more questions?
One question? Do we have a motion at this time?
I make the motion at, uh, second, or do it?
Second? I'll second.
I did, would you like me to read it again?
Well, that's my, my idea.
So administration recommends the approval of the purchase of the school supply packs not to exceed sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Motion by Mr. Escobar. Second?
I second. Aye, Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, I'm sure the families will be very appreciative.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, would be the review of Favens Elementary School principal recommendation and review of special education director recommendation. At this time, I want to ask our board members if it is necessary at this time to go into closed session? Or do we accept the recommendation for our, from our superintendent, Dr. Vigil, and move forward with a motion?
To the chair, um, I would like to make a motion to go through the recommendation. I mean, to read the resumes, and all the paperwork.
Second. So we have a motion and a second, so no need to go into closed session.
Thank you.
Mr. Flory? Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar?
Aye.
Mr. Escobar? Aye, Vice Chair. Motion passes.
Thank you.
If there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
You have a motion and a second, on Mr. Flory? Mr. Escobar? Mr. Escobar? Mr. Escobar? Aye, Vice Chair. Meeting is adjourned at seven forty-seven PM. Thank you, everyone.